Good evening. Welcome to the February 19th, 2019 Selectments Meeting. This has been rescheduled from last week. We canceled due to the snowstorm we had. All the Selectmen are here except for Mark Pendergast, the Town Manager, Town Clerk, Recreation Department, I see Police, I see Public Works, I see the Transfer Station, and a lot of different members of the public. Please stand with me and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to apologize when I was doing our roll call as I forgot that. Jack, our Finance Director is here also. We're going to take things a little out of order today because of the way our meetings are scheduled here. I'm going to suggest that we do our budget hearings first and get them out of the way. That way, the Town employees can go home and enjoy their supper. And if you haven't, everybody else, if you haven't had your supper, it's tough luck. I will make a motion that we change the order of business tonight and have our budget hearings first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. So bring us into our budget hearings. What's that?
Anytime you're ready. As you can see, the Police budget at the bottom of the page is increased by 2.3%. The Police MAP unit got a 2% increase as of this past January. There will not be any more changes to that until we negotiate a new contract, which will be coming up next year. So that's why we did give the full-time salary people a 3.3% increase. So all those, the longevity, FICA, Medicare, retirement, it's all adjusted for that. The health insurance again went up this year. I see it's a decrease. Yours, I can't remember what that's for.
We had a change in some memberships.
Okay. Did they pick up the ICMA or just spouses?
We have one that just opted out completely, Officer Reel. It was a decrease.
Otherwise, it's a pretty standard, not a lot of changes. Dispatch Services is one of the bigger changes that we had. As the contract that we signed with them, they were going to increase on the CPI for the Northeast. It's a little bit lower than I thought it was, but I'll take the lower percentage increase. And a nice part about that is we, this year we're in right now, we didn't have a price when we were doing the budget. You got approved for X number of dollars, and actually, by the time we got the final cost, it was higher than what we had expected. So there's been a little bit of an overage there will be this year. Plus, some other costs that had been fed into this year's contract, which costs for some fiber optic that's separate from the dispatch, but it's all built in. So it should all be there. So it makes it a little bit more consistent. Equipment maintenance went up by 5,000, and if you look at your justification sheet, you can see that. Any questions on the operating budget at all, or questions for Chief, Town?
No, these are pretty standard increases. I don't see anything out of the ordinary that would make me question.
If you go to Transfers, there's some capital budget items that are in there.
Which tab is that?
Eleven.
Yep. If you go to the behind the operate-
Transfer Station.
Transfer Station.
Sorry.
Wait a minute.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Sorry, guys. My fault.
Do you have a copy of that? No, that's Transfer Station. We're looking for transfers. It's where the- Here we are. Under fourteen, you'll have a list of items that we'll talk more as each department comes up, what we're looking for, for capital projects and items. This year, for Police, we're looking at two cruisers. This was part of the program, replacing two cruisers, some mobile radio upgrades, and are the lockers in here?
Yes, those are the same regular equipment.
Okay. Yeah, we have new, last year, we bought half the lockers that were requested. This year, we're buying the other half. So that's in your operating budget.
It is.
Yep. If you go back to that, you can go through the list of items. There was a request for a software program, and I told Chief I had not put it in the budget, but I was going to give him an opportunity to talk about that with the Board. So that was really the only bit larger of the capital requests that were made for his department. So if you'd like.
I would. The request was for, it's called a Vertura V100, it's a use of force simulator. That's why we have Sergeant Ledoux here tonight. He came down on his night off to speak a little bit about this. If you have questions, he does our firearms program and our use of force program. Over the course of my career, I've been exposed to quite a bit of stuff in regards to training and things to mitigate liability for the Town in regards to use of force. This, by far, is probably the most beneficial piece of equipment that I've seen using the entire use of force continuum. It, we had looked at a couple different systems. This system here is used across the country, but it is not being used in the state of Maine at this point. What it does is essentially runs the individual, the officer, through scenarios, and the software reacts to the commands or the decisions that the officer makes. So of these scenarios, if the officer acts correctly, the scenario might end with nothing more than the officer just doing a routine call. As these scenarios unfold, the officer's making decisions this entire time, making the correct decisions obviously might save somebody's life. Making a poor decision can cost him his life or a civilian's life as well. If Sergeant Ledoux would like to talk a little bit, he actually does the hands-on portion of our firearms program.
I can talk loud if you want.
Pull a chair up where I can-
Credit here, so we have the mic.
Yep.
There's a handout.
That should be behind the police.
Yeah, in the police section.
Okay. So basically, this system's kind of like, to boil it down for you guys, is basically like a really immersive, interactive, like, video game. That's just high-end in the sense of it's very decision-making oriented. So it allows the operator of the system to kind of branch each given scenario. So then, an officer will start with a scenario, and depending on, again, like Chief said, how he reacts, you can branch that scenario in a bunch of different ways. The tools that come with the system are all the tools that we carry on a daily basis, our firearm, taser, baton, pepper spray, flashlights even. All that stuff can be used in this training environment through these scenarios. So like you said, some of the scenarios end with maybe shooting, some end with maybe a taser, some end with just verbal commands, and all that's dictated on how the officer responds to the scenario. So if he runs through the scenario, doesn't do a good job, we can redo the scenario and continue to do it until he gets it right, which is a great training opportunity that sometimes you obviously don't get in the real world. So we obviously give that opportunity to the guys to get the training done right before they have to go handle it in, you know, a real-world scenario. All told, I think with branches, there's about 800 different scenarios included in the program. Firearms operate off CO2, so it's very similar to kind of what we have, obviously not live fire, but about as close as you're going to get, and much cheaper than what real ammo costs. If I were to set up scenarios like this, what we do now, we have what we call simunitions, which is a rather expensive version of training rounds, and we have to use live role players, which creates, you know, potential safety issues, and then I need to train them to do what these people are doing on a screen that's already pre-programmed. Having the system in-house allows us to work throughout the winter. Obviously, during the winter, we're not outside doing training because it's just too darn cold. So we can train year-round with this simulator. Outside of the scenarios, there's also static firearms essentially. So we can take our qualification program that we do with live fire, import that into the computer program, and then we can train on that year-round as well, again, at a fraction of cost because it's just the CO2 that runs the firearm. So live fire, you know, we pay, you know, 200 bucks for 1,000 rounds of ammo. 200 bucks would get us, I don't know, it was like 100,000 shots or something along that for the CO2, and we can do the same course of fire essentially. Now, that's not going to replace the live fire, we still have to do that, but it can cut down on some of the expense of the live fire because we're getting more reps doing in-house on the simulator.
Questions for Officer Ledoux?
No, is this something that's constantly, like, upgraded, like, when you make that initial purchase? Are there, like, different releases, or is this like a program that's...
They do, from what I understand, when you get the warranty package, which is whatever the cost of that is on top of, they provide, obviously, any technological work that needs to be done, and then whenever they create new scenarios, they automatically download and ship those to you.
Correct.
And that's just during that warranty period of time, or is that the whole time you own the program itself?
That's for as long as you pay the warranty, I believe.
Correct. Is there any intention to bring any other departments in on this, or is this going to be for Berwick entirely?
So we have the, we have the availability to let other agencies come in and use it. I'd spoken with the Town Manager briefly about the fact that we could potentially charge outside agencies to come in and use it at a nominal fee, but enough to cover, you know, using our facility. Fortunately, the upgrades that we're going to be having to our building would work into this system a great deal. Some of these scenarios, actually, you can use a cruiser, so it's as real to life as you can get in a training environment. So yeah, we could have, you know, I know if offered to outside agencies through our District One Training, which is York County essentially, I'd be shocked if we didn't have a considerable amount of activity from outside agencies. It really is-
I would think that once other departments found out that you did have it, there would be some significant interest.
There's not anything like this in York County.
Right. Well, we used to use this in the military quite a bit, and it saved us a lot of time. It also reduced the risk of, you know, being on, doing live fire.
Correct.
And also put personnel through their mental paces. So this is an important program, and I think it's beneficial to any, any public safety official to have in their toolbox, to help them in any way that they can. So I'm supportive of it. I think it's an important tool. I think it's a step forward for your department and for the training of the people within it. So anything we can do to help make things better and safer and allow officers to respond to effectively, critically, in a timely fashion, anything that helps them do that, I think, is important. So I think this would be a good tool.
I do, too.
And speaking with the Town Manager, it's probably, like I said, I told him, you know, off-record, that this was something that I'd be willing to do, just about anything to do to get for the officers. When you see something that you know is going to make these guys safer, and that goes further into the public, if we're safer, then they're safer. One other component to that, too, is being able to bring people from the outside, regular people like you, to come in and to see that it isn't like TV. It isn't, you know, you can't shoot somebody in the leg. That stuff just doesn't happen. The stress that's involved in an incident like that is, it's indescribable, and you can actually put, like I said, an individual civilian, like the Town Manager, through-
With the vest.
Through this scenario, and they'll come out with a completely different mindset as to what it is and what's taking place in real life. So that being said, I appreciate-
Unfortunately, I don't want to be a police officer.
No.
Anything we can do to help make the training better, I think, is important. So this is big in any industry, not just law enforcement. So virtual reality is very important. I think that would be a step in the right direction for us, if we can afford it.
We'll put it in.
Anybody else?
I would like to see it go forward. Very much in favor of that. We just need to figure out how to fit it into the rest of the budget and fund it.
It will be a task.
Yep.
We'll figure it out.
You said it's not widely used in Maine. Are there any in Maine being used?
Not this system that I'm aware of.
So the State Police don't have one? The City of Portland doesn't have one?
There's an older, they call it a FATZ, you're probably familiar with that. The Police Academy has, but I mean, that's a two-and-a-half-hour drive away, and it's, like I said, it's an older version.
Does anybody in New Hampshire use it or that you know of?
This is like, probably like, the tip of the spear of the system. There's probably seven or eight different companies that make training simulators like this, but these guys are pretty much on the cutting edge as far as the technology goes and the scenarios. And we, like I said, we had two companies come in, and you put them side by side, and this Vertura system just blew the other guys out on the water, as far as the quality of the video, the types of scenarios, the feedback that you got from interacting with. Like, so there's like a whole debrief session after each scenario that you run through, so that you can play it back. Whoever the instructor is can play it back and go step-by-step and break down each use of force that they use. So if they shot a guy, you can break down shot by shot of hits and misses and reaction time and all kinds. It's just, it's next-level stuff that they're just not around here.
No, I agree. It's a useful tool, is fitting it into the budgets, the thing I say. You know, I know that the Chief offered to give up a cruiser for it, but I'm very against that.
Thank you.
Well, we've worked hard to get our vehicles on schedule, it's not just the Police, but all the departments.
I agree.
And I don't want to fall off that schedule. That's the thing. It would help me is if you could get letters, not a commitment, but of interest from other departments, the county, you know, other departments, saying that they would be willing to have their men come here and train. Is, I know, that's one way to defray the cost. I can see that.
So I can tell you that Kevin and I already started pursuing some help, I guess. Kenny Bunk Savings Bank, I actually have the check here tonight, has offered $3,000 towards this. So I mean, we're doing what we can, and I would, I would extend myself to say that I am confident, 100% confident, that we can bring other agencies in to use this. Figuring out a pay fee will be something that I guess you and I will have to talk about, but there's nothing like it that I've seen, and you're hearing that from Sergeant Ledoux as well. It's just the best of the best, and it's an extremely important component in law enforcement.
Well, as I said, if you could, not even a firm commitment, but just letters of interest from other departments, that would help me a lot.
Sure.
You know, because, you know, is the idea of, yeah, we have it, train our offices, and the possibility of bringing other offices and other agencies in sounds great, but is that's not a promise, that's not anything firm. Is, you know, I just want, you know, if you could get letters of interest from other agency, other departments, you know, that would be interested in using this, it would help me a lot.
Okay.
I'd put my guarantee on it, too, for what it's worth. I guarantee other guys from other agencies that'll come down.
I would be shocked if-
I've already talked about it with a bunch of guys on other places, and they're like, "You let me know when we get it, and we're coming down." So that's, I wouldn't even hesitate to stake it.
Well, we won't be making any decision about it tonight, but is we have, we have some information to look at, and we'll get some more information from you. You know, we'd appreciate that. So.
Okay. Any other questions on their budget?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Get this back in the budget.
Can I ask one question of Chief?
Come to a microphone.
He's right here.
Yep. Everybody else is out there.
Frank Underwood, two years ago, at the Maine Municipal Association meeting, the keynote speaker or the most popular presentation was an active shooter presentation that was conducted. I think Steve was there. Does any of this simulation apply to an active shooter, where you could expand this into the school systems, if that becomes the direction the Town wishes to go in?
It does have actually several scenarios that are based on workplace shootings, school shootings. So that, those scenarios are already into this system. Are you asking if we bring school employees into this?
Yes.
Put them through?
We're talking about outside agencies coming in. Is this something that could generate something through the schools or through businesses or something?
So, you know, exposing them to see what happens on, I guess, the law enforcement side, yes, absolutely. I don't know how it would benefit, say, a teacher going through this scenario. It's, this is based, you know, it's a law enforcement, use-of-force system. If a group of teachers came in and watched how we have to interact with this system when they're doing these school shooting scenarios, I'm sure that they're going to glean a lot of information from those scenarios that they're not going to see otherwise. They're very, very realistic, as realistic as you can get.
Because they were talking about that response time, that can happen anywhere from 30 seconds to three minutes.
Correct.
And I think if we share that with some of the others around, that would be beneficial information.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
What's that?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Public Works. Ten. All right. On the full-time wages, as you know, we were in contract negotiations. We had put 2%, I had, into the wages. I've asked each department to do that. But, so that, those will change, but depending upon what we finalize for contract wages. Of course, they're looking for a three-year commitment, which is normal, but it will shift depending on what we do. Also in this is we're requesting a new full-time person be added to it, and also a full-time, part-time employee, limited on hours, but will be there. We have our part-time people who-
Been there for 20 years or more.
They are getting a little bit older and are not necessarily-
Robert's driving them too hard, just driving them right out, huh?
So we really have to plan for that, and I think it's very, very difficult. I see every town looking for snowplow drivers, and they're not like anything else. We don't have a lot of young people out there who look at that kind of work. So I think we need to be proactive, and hopefully we'll find some bodies. I did cut back on the part-time wages based on that. Otherwise, we left some of the overtime the same. Not a lot of, the one, if you go down through, you'll see the health insurance has gone up. Most of that is through the Teamsters. And operating supplies went up, but the bigger increase is, we've always budgeted roughly around $120,000 for salt.
And we're always-
Every year, we go over that. So this year, I was looking at 150 because that's been what we've been spending annually. I put 140 in, and let's see how we do with that. But this year, we are definitely going to be over on the salt budget. Probably, what would we say? Probably, what did we say this morning, about 20 some odd thousand? Because you got to order more.
Most is of the date, so.
So, um, otherwise, part of the contract negotiations, we're talking about uniforms, to see what do the employees actually want. Some of them don't throughout the whole, except for fire. Doesn't like wearing sometimes the pants in the summer. They rather wear regular shorts, which I don't blame them, but I don't want to see their legs, but that's okay. Robert and some other department heads.
I don't want to see Robert's legs either.
Otherwise, uh, the increase of the 8.5% increase is really based on adding an extra body and cutting back on part-time. This year, um, he's not requesting any big equipment.
Yay!
He is, we are asking for a dump body that we had planned to buy last year, and we only purchased one.
Sidewalk plow instead, right?
Yeah, yeah. No, I think we got the loader instead.
One of those.
One of the big ticket items. This is, will go on the smaller truck that we have that we couldn't get it inspected because the body was so rusted out. So this will replace that with a stainless steel dump body, and we should, it's got low miles.
Yeah, what year is that truck?
2007.
Doesn't have the miles like the other ones.
It's all salt, right.
And also this year, um, there's been a request for some diagnostic software, and we have been farming out quite a bit of work to make in other places to get some work done, because we don't have the diagnostics for these newer trucks. This, it's a 6,000-plus purchase, I think it's a good investment. I think we have a, uh, a good mechanic who knows how to use it, and it'll benefit him to do, we can do more work in-house, so that's. Otherwise, it's, that's about it for Public Works, there's not a lot of that.
Yeah, something that we've mentioned the last couple meetings is the fuel tanks. The schedule on that.
We are putting $25,000 aside, that will be, you'll see that in the transfers, for five years. And we, I don't think they've tested the tanks, but they're not too worried. They think they'll pass, so we have to have them tested a little bit more frequently for those five years, but after that, we'll have the money put aside, and we'll just either put them above ground or underground, whichever.
You're going to replace them, yeah.
Yeah, we'll replace them. So there are some items that we have to do this year, but we'll take care of that in operating portion. Any questions, Robert?
None.
Road schedule is, is Robert and I have been talking about this, I think, since I've been here. And I've put $600,000 into the budget. A lot of that's going to depend on what happens in Augusta. Tom and I talked today, I'm not real pleased with what I read about the revenue sharing. It's in statute, it's supposed to go back up to 5%. The governor's budget keeps it at 2.5, which a lot of, I read in the Bangor paper today, thanks to Beth O'Connor, that, because I wrote here an email saying that we need to have that revenue sharing back where it was promised to be. And, um, and she mentioned back to me that both sides of the aisle are pretty upset with that part of it, because that's been a promise. We've been very patient, so we'll fight tooth and nail. I'm sure MMA will be involved in that discussion, the Legislative Policy Committee, so.
Hopefully, it's been very painful.
Yeah, it really has prevented us from funding some of the infrastructure things that we really need to start spending some money on.
Right, as you've said to us before, you know, we have over $5 million worth.
Roadwork.
Roadwork to do with bridges and everything else, and, you know.
We really need.
Even at $600,000 a year, it's not going to.
Not even keeping up.
No, no.
This will, this will make a good dent, but at least it will, if we can do this for three or four years.
So you talked about the roads, if we, if we do put the $600,000 in, is the Pine Hill Road, is that up to Worcester Road, or?
Yeah, I think it is.
We decided to go, I think, to the water tank for.
Water tower.
Initially, that's the worst section.
Right.
And then.
We're going to rebuild it completely, we're going to tear up what's there, put in some new gravel. They've been ditching it the last year, so, and replacing culverts, so we should be pretty well-prepared.
Yeah, we got more to do.
We got more to do, yes, we do, but.
I got a place you can dump the dirt if you need it.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
But we also are planning to do Worcester Road, do, finish up all our other roads that we rebuilt this year.
Put the top coat on them.
Put the top coat on. And Mr. DePree will be here to ask you about Backstreet tonight, but we can talk about that later, so. Any other questions? Transfer station.
Thank you, Robert.
Oki's going to come sit with us.
Bring your seat with you. It's pretty straightforward.
Evening. Again, uh, it doesn't seem to reflect that, but it's a 2% raise, so the guys at the transfer station, which do, I think they do a good job for us. I still get complaints about the secondhand shop, but I just thank you for expressing your anger, and, but I hear it's still busy on Tuesdays once in a while.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, otherwise, we, like I had said before, with what's going on in China with the recycling, and, and we increased our recycling, it's, uh, it's cost us a little bit more money. So we've added in a 3% for this, will probably be over this year, if I didn't budget 3% more. But this year, for the, based on that, we've budgeted 3% based on the newer numbers. So that's where our real expenses are, in the hauling fees, the pull fees, and the mount we. But I do see that we're still recycling a lot of the stuff, which is really.
How much increase have we had, you know, with the recycling?
Recycling, I'd say, we're probably getting about 90% of people recycling right now. A lot of people that didn't do it before are doing it now.
And the splitting it up at the transfer station, the way with the traffic coming in and the bins on each side, that's working out.
They love it.
It makes it a lot easier, I know, when I pull in.
The thing is, we haven't been busy since Christmas. I don't know why, whether people are down in Florida or whatever, but we haven't seen half the traffic that we usually see.
You shouldn't have said that.
Yeah, that's true.
It will come springtime.
Spring cleanup.
And the equipment and everything seems to be all okay, is.
As far as our equipment.
Yeah.
Waste management.
But they're responsive when things need to be fixed.
They're supposed to be replacing the compacters. But we wanted to wait till spring, warmer weather.
Yeah.
We got to raise the buildings up there in order for them to get them out, because they were built right.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
That's going to be a little bit to figure that out, but, I mean, it's not, you know, really that complicated, but in order for them to, you know, change them out with new ones, that's what has to be done, so. But, yeah, we didn't want to tackle that during the winter time. We also got the problem with their contract running up, running out in the, what, two years? Yeah, don't worry about that. Cross that bridge, you'll come to it.
Seems like we just did that.
Feels like it, yeah.
All right.
Any other questions?
Uh, pretty straightforward. Thank you for doing such a great job out there.
I know, good job.
Thank you.
Recreation, Kim? Too hot? Recreation, uh, let's talk about what's happened to the part-time wages. We've seen mandatory increase to $11 an hour, which has had a substantial impact on that budget, all the adjustments that go with it. There is some incentives in there for some other increases if certain goals are met. So it's a little bit extra. Otherwise, as you look down the line of percent change, very little. Everything that's the increases shares has to do with wages, which is considerable. That was our government, the state, our government telling us we needed to increase.
The voter.
And the voter.
The vote, the vote increases and.
There's been, been talk of putting permanent restroom facilities there. Has, has there been any more, no discussion about that, of when, or?
There's been discussions.
Yeah, we've had some discussions, and we've had some ideas discussed at the rec meetings, looked into like, single standing ones that can be locked on a system as well, so. Different options.
Yeah, we're going to, the committee's going to decide where they want them, if, if they want to do that. Kim and I have talked about expanding the budget to add something on to the building, which would make more sense, the sewer line's right there, water's right there. I need to get a cost, and I know Kim's working on that, to do all these things. Some of the stuff we're doing down there is going to come out of her budgets for, we have to paint the building, the concrete blocks. She, we had it fixed last year, there was some cracks in the concrete, and we had to get fixed. And do some painting on the.
The pavilion needs some layers and painting and the eaves and.
So we're getting prices on that.
Building needs some attention.
What about the equipment out there? Like the play equipment and stuff like that, because I know during the summer, especially when activities are going on, all the other children are usually playing on the, on the equipment out there, and it's quite dated, you know, and not the best.
Dated pieces down.
Have you, have you been out there recently, so?
Where we put the shed up last, not last year, but the year before, we took down the old dome that.
The climbing dome, yeah.
Yeah, which was kind of between the tennis court and the minor baseball field and that playground. It was kind of seeing some wear and tear, and impossible to get the weed out.
At least 20 years old, because I helped put it up.
Oh, I think that one might have been even older. Some of those were, so, yeah.
One of the things that I've been waiting for, and I know Kim has too, and she has, is the recreation master plan.
Right, I was going to ask you where that is.
The draft came to us, and I don't know what shore, I made some comments to Rick Vandenberg of things that I thought were missing from it, and I'm sure it's.
Yep, we're in like the second, third draft, they meet again next week. So hopefully have, have that, be able to present it to you guys soon.
Yeah, we still have some time, but not a heck of a lot to get it stuck back in here, but.
I know, I just, it sees a lot of use, and, you know, I would really like to see some, some nice rubber eyes type stuff and better play equipment for, for the kids that are out there.
Yep, there's been dreams of splash pad somewhere. We did add some more of the playground carpeting last spring. We also would like to get a way to kind of contain that, whether that's railroad ties or boards, or to keep it where we want it.
Right, rather than spreading around, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we all have also budgeted for security cameras to replace the ones we have. I just got to figure, you know, because those, we still have kids who vandalize it when there's nobody around at night, so we need to address that. Chief knows it, we just got to update what we have and hope they don't trash them.
And that's one of the challenges of putting up permanent bathrooms, when I make them as vandal-resistant.
Right.
As we possibly can.
Well, then they're going to have to be maintained as well, so they'll have to be a contract to make sure that they're cleaned and.
Right, and added expense. One of the units we looked at was the self-contained one, kind of what you might say to State Park or something.
Oh, okay.
They had so many inches open at the bottom, so it makes it easier to check if there's somebody in there, makes it easier for the officers to make sure we don't have someone hanging out in them continuously.
And the, the new parking area has been very well-received.
Yep.
It makes it a lot easier.
Yep, just a few extra spaces, and a lot of families that use that field have benefited from it. Steve's talked about putting fences up with, on the neighbors to.
Right, yeah, we, we have to, we have to go through the whole process.
Yeah, we have, we have budgeted for the fence. We've got a price to do both sides of that area to replace the old stuff that's falling down. So that will get done this year, and I think we're just going to leave, haul some material in to build a better base for parking, and leave it until the Vision Berwick and the rec committee decide where and what we're going to do for fundraising for a community center. So we're just going to leave the ground bare for them.
And there was some discussion about doing some landscaping.
Yeah.
To help direct people where they should be parking and not being on the neighbor's area and.
Yeah, that's, we need to, that's a big improvement, we'll make this year, so. When Mr. Pendergast gets back, we'll corner him to what we should do for landscaping, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go to transfers. Fire protection, these are our fire hydrants. Put budgeted what we had last year, I don't expect an increase from the water department, which, once we get done this budget, they'll, they'll be at the tail end of it, they're coming before you, Chris and I have been working on that, so a few changes he has to make. Again, the sewer department has made a request for the same amount, 36,386. And I left it blank this year.
I thought when they were here last year, they said that more than likely they wouldn't be asking for it because they were going to be making so much money on their sewage intake.
They did ask for it this year?
I think so, yeah.
I didn't think they were, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, because they'd.
I'll check, I'll have to go back.
Last year when they were here, we talked about it, and they said that, you know, they were going to make $150,000 more.
They've done well, from what I can stand.
Than before, and they were hoping that that would be the last time they had to ask for it.
Yeah, that's why I left it blank.
You know, and, you know, they said they expected it to increase even more over this last year.
Yeah, my understanding was they weren't.
I'll double-check my, my packets, I, for some reason, I thought I, we got something.
I read somewhere that, yeah.
We have, they're looking, but I'll, I'll double-check, and I'll, I have a meeting with Lisa tomorrow morning, so I can double-check. Operating transfers out, if you go to, in the back is a sheet of items that were capital items. We have the third phase of the electrical updates. Also, town hall security camera upgrades. We did, this year, we did the pads and security cameras upstairs, and we changed out new cameras as well. So we have a few more items to do and finish that work up. We have customer service windows, there's been a request, and I agree with them that we need to take those windows out and make it more user-friendly and better for the staff.
Better for everybody, so you don't have to stick your head down.
Exactly.
He's the thing to talk to me.
So we budgeted that, Patty put out a, uh, request that gets a couple of prices, and this was a good price, I think it was from Portland Glass. Also, we, we'd like to refinish the auditorium floors when springtime rolls around. We got a price for that, which we had several prices, but this is the best, and I, and I actually felt pretty comfortable with this guy. He knows what he's doing, he's given us a real good price, so that's in the budget. Again, I've kept the cruisers in this year, and also, we've consistently budgeted $50,000 for fire apparatus, because we have other trucks coming up down the road. There's a heat monitor, a heart monitor, I'm sorry, that, replacing mobile radio upgrades, SBCA, we always put money into that account for replacing that, which is on a regular basis. Same with protective gear. basis, same with protective gear. The dump body, thirty-five thousand. Roads is sixty thousand, six hundred thousand, and then, like, twenty thousand for five years, that's what we budgeted for, the fuel replacement. Also, we have our MS four outfall project coming up and that will be for finishing up all the stuff that you'll be looking at tonight for the drafting of all that work. And then the following year, we'll actually do the physical work of fixing it all. Civil defense, every year you budgeted five hundred, it's a pretty small account, I beefed it up a little bit this year. And grant matches, we've been trying to put together, I've been talking to James and he, we have a list of grants that we'd like to apply for down the road, some of them are a few years out, 'cause we're not in the running, but we thought we'd put twenty-five thousand a year in for the next few years and hopefully we have enough to match some of the grants that we're looking at. And then the fire station and police station bond, this will be the first year of interest in principle, will be two hundred. And that could change, 'cause I, I'm not sure what the bond bank, I haven't heard from them yet, what the interest rate will be, we put one in based on what they had, but it could change, it could hopefully go down, which would make it even nicer. If you go down, we'll be using, this year, we used, well, last year we used a hundred thousand from the unassigned fund balance, we have a policy that we have to keep twelve point five percent. So this is, we have just under five hundred thousand that we could use, but I only put in two hundred and fifty. And like to keep that there if we could. And then from our capital improvement fund, we have funding that is there that we put a hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred, that's funding that sits in those reserve accounts for projects like we're doing. So, and the six hundred and ninety will be what we will have to fund through taxes, so. And then you have your debt service, which is twenty-one thousand, same as we've been budgeting. Contingency, I've only requested ten thousand, we cut that a few years back from fifteen to ten. And gonna ask for the same amount this year. And we have the fire department EMT vacancy contingency, that is, it sits in the reserve, so we don't have to fund that this year, we didn't use it last year, but we may have to look down the road, may have some changes, so we kept it flat. Any questions? Nope. On that? That's good. We were gonna do miscellaneous, but I think I'll hold on that. And we'll jump back into our regular meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not at the moment.
Nope, very good.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
And thank you to the finance director.
All right, to bring us back into our regular order. Is, the first order is approval of meeting minutes from January eighth, that's when Rebecca and I were here.
Yeah, so I'll move the minutes as presented.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? And then it brings us to our January twenty-second minutes. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. That brings us to our first public comment, the first public comment is fifteen minutes long, is if you have a comment, please step to the podium, tell us your name and where you live.
Dennis Dupree, owner of Devon Duke Monogrammers. Debbie and I have owned Devon Duke Monogrammers and Berwick now going on twenty-eight years and twenty-three years of them, we've been located down in a square right next to Subway and Spencer Matthews. So I'm here tonight just to talk to you about Backstreet. I've talked to different general managers over the years about Backstreet and about having it paved. What I've learnt over twenty-three years is, every year the town is really good about bringing in gravel, grating it out, taking care of it, plowing, sanding, whatever they need to do. We get a rainstorm, all the rain comes down, there's no more gutters on the end of buildings, it comes out, goes down the front, goes in the drains in front of Spencer Matthews and then right on the corner by Subway. So over the twenty-five year period, based on some of my gathering of information, we've spent about thirty-eight thousand dollars putting in sand, maintaining it, sucking it out of manholes, and they go from there. So what I've done is I've talked extensively with Brad Scott, the owner of Spencer Matthews, and Ron Long, the owner of Subway Building. Currently on the side of Subway, we have, on the side of Subway, we have like grandfathered for sixty-five, seventy years now, about four spots for, one for downstairs for Subway and the three tenant apartments they have upstairs. And also on the right side by Brad, Spencer Matthews, he's got four on the side of the building. So I'll just basically just show you this, it's a really quick light, this is Spencer Matthews, he's got some here, Ron Long along Subway has some here. So that's basically, you know, what we're looking at. So what I've done is actually gone out there and just done some measuring and gotten one of those little measuring things and started moving some lines around. I'd like to see if the town would be willing to take on tarring it and working on the actual stormwater issue, because it really, it's terrible, it's out of control. When we get heavy rains, the rain now that we had the other day, is, the sidewalk is now covered with dirt. On three occasions that I can remember, Paul Lappier won, Rob, and everybody's been really good with the town, taking care of it, they've actually had to take the bucket loader and start at Spencer Matthews and come up the street, take three inches of silt with the bucket loader on the storms that we've had in the past, like the Mother's Day storms and the torrential rains, and actually take that dirt away and put it back in the alley and then backgrade it. So I think, you know, for four hundred years, Berwick has had a dirt road in this downtown and still does today, a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet from the town hall. So if we're gonna be realistic here about, thinking about getting in front of the cot, and I've always said to Tom, you know, you got the horse with the blinders and that big, big carrot, what happens if you get rid of the carrot? You get the whole salad bar. Well, I think it's about time that the town take a really serious look at it, I've brought it to Jim McMahon, a little bit to Gary, Keith Trefethan, and now I'm here tonight with Steve and the board. I've done my homework on it and if we spend a little money just on surveying a little bit and get the horse back in front of the cot, we can actually go from eight parking spots to nineteen. On the back pot with that little white fences, and I'd appreciate it if y'all get a chance sometime, just drive through the alley, just to take a look at what I'm talking about. Because if you move that fence over about fifteen feet, it wouldn't, it would infringe a little bit on Front of Jupiter, but at this point, as far as I'm concerned, it's an opportunity for the downtown with minimal, maybe toying twenty feet by eighty feet and picking up eight to ten spots of parking. I just think this would be a great start of working and getting a little bit more parking in the downtown area. You don't have to come up with four hundred spaces at a time, but if we work on incrementally picking up, you know, fifteen to twenty spots, it's gonna help us in the future. But it's also gonna keep your costs down on maintaining and putting dirt in that alley. It's a mess. Once we do that and we redirect, UPS has to come, when they deliver, right, right, right. So basically for them, they come in off Michelle's gas station, it came in right, oil trucks come in right, Sam Matthews comes in right, the people that pick up the dumps that comes in right. So you can change your parking at an angle and actually pick up close to, you'll have twenty spots. That's what I've done on my research on that part of it, and I've watched it for twenty-three years. One other thing that I'd like to mention before I sit down, is that I've looked at, they talked about the fire department and so on and so forth and all of the studies. A while back, you had a group come in and talk about the Estorbrook School. In my opinion, you're gonna knock the school down, it's gonna cost thousands of dollars. I look at the plan that the fire department has and I look at the plan of the building that it has now, and based on what they're using now, and I'm not saying I don't want a new fire station, they need it, I'm saying they do, but what I'm saying is, you really need to look at keeping that school. You really do, because they have a fire station now that the footing is probably, what, a hundred and fifty by a hundred and fifty? And if you look at that land, and I walked over it twice, and last week I was over last week, just looking at that piece, and if you shift that fire department just a little bit, you can get that fire department in and still keep that building. Right now, currently, you could put ten to twelve of the existing fire stations on that lot. That's how big that piece of land is. You're talking about shifting it, you're talking about having maybe two vehicles, maybe I'm wrong, that would have to drive in and drive out, so they could come either way. I believe it's two. The rest can just back into where you need. So if you can reconfigure that building, you could save it. I'm not sure about all the numbers that you would save, but I think that the town would save an awful lot of money. In my opinion, if you put that market, that building back on the market, you dump it for three fifty, you put three fifty back in your roads and reconfiguring your fire department, your sidewalks, right in that location, okay? And have somebody come in there and put it back on the map, paying taxes, let them take care of all the crap that's on the inside, we know it's filled of all kinds of stuff that's on the inside, let them take care of it. You dump it for three fifty, make it user friendly, so that somebody's gonna come in and say, okay, I'll come in and do that for three fifty, I'll put another million and a half into it, and maybe we have twenty-eight to thirty, thirty-five apartments up there for sixty-two and over. And now it's back on the tax map. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you.
You have any questions? Please stop by Devon Duke.
We know where you are. Any other public comment?
Frank Underwood, Twenty-One Key Road. I knew Dennis was gonna mention that tonight, and I've, all along I've been looking at the fact that as we move forward in town, we can deal with what we control. And on the periphery of the prime site, we end up controlling a lot of land and the opportunities. For example, we'll have a new fire station, so we'll have a building that we can deal with. All along, before something happens across the way here, I felt that we could be doing things along around it, that includes the Riverfront Park, and you've seen how that has been progressing. Just to back up on the Estorbrook School, we looked at that as the downtown vision group and we actually had a guy interested in it and we did the environmental review on that, the same people that I think did the Doran School or part of the police station. There's a fifty thousand dollar cleanup cost associated with what's in that building, that was based on the report that we got. So when we started out, when we started out, we had the housing partnership interested in that white building with the idea of the town was gonna give the land to them. We transitioned from, well, and the town voted to do that with a sunset provision on it. They didn't get their funding, however, they did expend quite a bit of money to prepare their plans and stuff, and you've seen, they had a nice rendering and a nice set of plans dealing with twenty-four units that would go in there. So now, I also understand that the town has appraised that, I'm not sure what that appraisal cost, you had talked about getting that white building appraised, I'm not sure if you ever went through with it.
We did.
Over March, about.
I don't remember.
Didn't you have a lot to compare it with? Most of what they had to compare it with were larger brick buildings, much like the Bateman's.
But that's really not the point I wanted to make, because we were going in the direction, the last thing I heard is the select were talking about demoing that to make it, everything fit. And so we've gone from giving it away for a buck, which would have put it back on the tax roll and they'd be paying about twenty-five thousand dollars a year in taxes, and they'd be paying twenty-two thousand dollars in impact fees. They would have been picking up that fifty thousand dollar liability, so that was an avoided cost that we had. We know there's an electrical service problem for that whole site over there, Dave Stolpe's been dealing with that for years, I think Roland Sears is kind of following up on that now. So we know it all comes through that old building and it's an eighteen or twenty-two thousand dollar cost to bring the right service in. The Portsmouth Partnership is interested in that space. I reached out to Marty Chapman and I've had a dialogue with him. My email that I sent to Steve and all the board members was basically, I think before concrete is poured or a wrecking ball comes swinging through, that we sit down and have a meeting, an interim step would be a meeting where now we have an engineered site plan for both the white Estorbrook School from what Partnership did, and I'm assuming Sabego Techniques has advanced.
No, they're not gonna be doing it, it's a Blaze Engineering.
Well, whoever, but I'm assuming if we're trying to deal with something in a build-out cycle this year, that there's an engineered plan there. And to build off of what Dennis said, you sit down with those two engineered plans and you might have to tweak one a little bit, tweak the other a little bit, but you might find that we can end up with a nice complex in there that would tie sidewalks from School Street through Logan Street all the way over to Sullivan Street with a new entrance way. I think it, if we do that, it would set the stage for the town being very proactive, it would set the theme for what we're expecting. And then if we start dealing with on the periphery with the Great Falls Park and some of those things, then now we have something to show when people come in to look at the eleven, the eleven acres. So that memo I sent or email I sent was basically thinking we should have that joint meeting to at least say, can it work? And if it, and if it works, I think we go back to the partnership and see if they're interested in it, which they are, I will tell you that, Marty Chapman is very interested in it. He thinks it would be a very good fit to have that kind of a sixty-two and older facility right beside a police and fire station. I mean, he thinks it'd be a good fit. But at least have the dialogue before we start spending a lot of money, because if we now go down the road of demoing it to get it site ready for, to sell it, you're gonna spend fifty thousand dollars in environmental cleanup, you're gonna demo it for, what, a hundred thousand, I'm not sure what the actual demo was for the sober home, but it's, this is much bigger than the sober home.
Yeah.
So at least have that dialogue. And then the other thing is, there's a bunch of things happening in town, or potentially could happen in town, and we don't have an economic developer, director, we don't have a planner that is in-house. The idea would be is to convene a couple of meetings with a subset of the board of selectmen, I mean, two selectmen and the manager, and this, three or four people that have been very interested in this economic development committee that we used to have, that we wanna reformulate that, to start some of the dialogue and put these eight or ten things down on paper so that you guys all understand it, and then you can come back to the board. So it might be a subset of Tom with Ed, Tom with Rebecca, Ed with Ken, that kind of a thing, and create, so that you have some firsthand understanding of what the potential is for everything around the, around the site. This is intended to be positive tonight, it's the new Frank Underwood.
Thank you. Aw, come on up. Come on up.
It's all serious, what you do, but I have been personally contacted twice, and I think some of you know this, about a CEO that has told me that Berwick is the number one location for two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. So I drove north of here in the town that they're in now and looked at several of their buildings. And I asked this person, which one would you be considering? And he said, this one. So based on the information that I could gather from looking at that building and the specs and making a couple phone calls to Sanford and a couple other towns, Water Row and a couple other towns. and a couple other towns, it's a million-dollar building. 14 to 22 employees. We have a couple pieces of land. They've hired a firm. They're doing their homework. They want to come to Berwick. And who are they going to talk to? Over the years, they've come and talked to the economic people, because they would come to the Town Hall and say, "There's a bunch of volunteers that are doing this," whether it was Vicky and Dana and Frank and myself and, you know, Morris Butler and all those people that got involved in the past. This is serious. We could lose this. This is a million-dollar building, and they want to bring 14 to 22 people here, and I've talked to this CEO of this business twice.
Why hasn't he come into the Town Office? Why hasn't he come into the Town Office and talked to somebody?
He's hired a firm, and they're working on it. And that's a good thing. I'm just here to tell you that I've had this conversation twice. And in the past, what's happened is they could come to somebody, and they will come, because I've told them where to go, they know where to go. But we should be out in front of this. When we had this group, we went out and we contacted these people and invited them. And the people from Janes came to Devon Dukes, and Judd Knox, the CEO, came to Devon Dukes and said, "What's going on?" And people contacted Dana and Vicky and everybody and said, "Oh, we're hearing about this, we're hearing about that. This is your group." So I just want you to know, they want to come. But I think personally, we should reach out. With just a phone call. And if you'd like to do that, I can give you that information. But I really believe the town of Berwick should reach out.
Thank you.
We can't reach out until we have a name and a number.
I'm here now to tell you that, but I wanted to make it public information that I think we should reach out. And everybody's doing a great job, and things are going forward, and I think that this opportunity, we really don't want to miss it. Because there's no impact hardly on school at all.
Dennis is my setup man. We know that if we pass this on to Fund of Jupiter, it falls on deaf ears. I mean, it's been proven. And that's why we're a little bit blurry, because I've had the same discussion with Dennis and several others, Derek White and a few other people. And the idea is, we need to control our own destiny, and that's why periphery might be the thing, but we also need to make sure that we're getting some response out of Mr. Cahaya when that land is back to him. Not all that land has gone back to him yet, only this seven acres. So we still got another bite of the apple. And if you recall, the town originally had raised $140,000 to buy what you're calling Lot 133, the parking lot area. I mean, maybe we go back to Mr. Cahaya, instead of turning it back to him, we buy it, and now we control it. Like I said, if you own it, you can control it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on. We have no public hearing tonight. We have no reports of committees. There's department reports, we've gone through a bunch of them. Appointments, presentations, and other guests. We have done unfinished business, stormwater and road improvement bids.
You should have in your packets a spreadsheet that, for the bids that we put out for the work up on Alton Street. And this will be one of the final identify MS4 projects that we have. Sounds from Dennis, we may have a few more, but it needs to be addressed. All these were scored, we developed, the people who submitted, we got bids from C.V. Mayer, DuBois and King, CES Engineers, Malone and McBroom, and Goral Palmer. They're all transportation people. They scored them all, and what they did, you can see on the spreadsheet, the high score was Malone and McBroom. That would be Christie's recommendation, based on the points, and the completeness of the proposal. They did an excellent job.
Now, are they the same ones doing our road study?
They're the same group that's doing our traffic study, yes. As you can see, it's phased in. This year, we'll be doing Phase 1 within what we have right now for funding, which is $15,700. We had some that were higher than that. The second phase will start in 1920, which is $18,000, and Phase 3 will also be done at $19,000. So we'll have all that worked on this coming year, and then next budget, we will put it out for estimates or for RFPs for the work to be done. So, which comes at a good time, because that's the same time that we're looking at doing a lot of paving up in that area, so they'll be digging up that section, and we planned it that way, so.
Just for the public to know, as I'll read off the scoring, the C.V. and Maher was 90 points, DuBois and King were 86, CES Engineers was 83, Malone and McBroom was 94, and Goral Palmer was 87. So the Malone and McBroom and C.V. and Maher were the two highest, you know, four points separate them. C.V. and Maher is the ones that did it last, the last part of it. They had been some issues with that, but they did respond and correct things. You said Christie recommends the Malone and McBroom, even though they're the highest in their bid, correct?
Yep. James and Robert and Christie sat down and did all the scoring, so it's pretty unbiased, I think.
Yep. Any comments from the rest of the board? Any recommendations?
I'm going to go with what the high score was, which is Malone and Broom. They provided the most complete contract proposal, so that would be my recommendation. I know that's Christie's.
I was going to say that was Christie's as well.
Yep.
I'm just a little surprised with the C.V. and Mayer. Their Phase 3 is significantly lower than everybody else's. That kind of worries me a little bit.
Yeah, that really took us surprised, because I think they missed something.
Quite a bit lower, yeah.
I mean, we had a lot of questions, you know, from different groups, and we made sure all the questions that got asked, well, to everybody, the response, so they all had our responses from it. Christie does a great job for us, so.
She's been doing a good job over the years, so.
I would move that we accept the recommendation provided to us for Malone and McBroom to conduct the Berwick Stormwater Improvements as they are presented to us.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, just to tie into that, we did get a report from the DEP on our annual review that she does for all of the projects, and we got very positive remarks from DEP of all of the stuff that we've done. They had one question, which was, I can answer that, and they wanted to make sure we got all the catchphrases, and we did. Robert does that, and James works with him on that, and Carly, so she does a great job. It's amazing how much she knows.
Very good. That brings us to our town manager report.
We had a resignation from the Sewer Department. John England sent me a letter of resignation. He's changed his job, he won't have time to do that, so you need to accept his letter of resignation and...
No.
I'll have no.
There's more coming, so we're going to be looking for some members to fill that board down the road, so, but you need to vote on that.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained?
They'll come home at night.
I know.
I also received, I had people in town, Carol Locke and Clifton Locke.
Carol and Cliff, yep.
Yep, on 19 Moore Street. They want to give us a easement deed that goes between their properties, which actually has water lines running through it. And I told him just to have it written up and get it signed, and I'd present it to the board. You need to vote to accept it, and it's just, if we have to do any work there, we can get on the property and do it without any hassle. So, let's look at that. We still, we have to register it with registered deeds, that's it.
We had talked about this before.
Yeah, I told you when they first came.
Yep, yeah, I know, I know both of them, and they're more than willing to work with the town any way they can. And that's the water line that goes out past the town garage, out that way, correct?
Yep.
Is that the one that cuts across country up to the water tower? Do you know if that's that line?
I'm not sure of that one.
I think it might be.
I'll check with Robert, but it could be.
Yeah, I believe that's the main line that goes up to feed the tank on top of the hill. So it'd be good to have that.
Yes, it would. If that's the case.
And this has been looked at by the attorneys?
Nope, I just got it today, so.
Yep.
I can run it by the attorney?
Table it.
Yeah, table it until our next meeting, then.
Okay, very good. I told you about the MS4 report. Always nice to get positive marks from the DEP. Otherwise, I haven't heard from Mr. Cahaya. He had somebody who was interested in that big tank over there, and they've decided to do something different. So, and we also sent him a draft of the traffic study discussion that we'll have next Thursday, and then I haven't heard a word from him either way. So I have reached out to several contractors who buy property and do building, and hope to hear from them, to see if they might be interested in purchasing that property and doing something, local people in this area. That's all I have.
Thank you. Selectment communication, I have none.
Nothing from Comcast, huh?
Nothing from Comcast this week, no. And that brings us to our counts payable. And we've got a lot of them. Count payable warrant.
Thank you.
1930 from January 24, 2019, for the amount of $123,355.12. Water warrant, 0930 from January 24, 2019, for the amount of $438.36. Count payable warrant, 1931 from January 31, 2019, for the amount of $706,688.18. Water warrant, 0931 from January 31, 2019, for the amount of $133,220.82. Payroll warrant, 1931 from January 31, 2019, for the amount of $60,520.36. Count payable warrant, 1932 from February 7, 2019, for the amount of $157,583.13. Water warrant, 0932 from February 7, 2019, for the amount of $5,197.3. Payroll warrant, 1932 from February 7, 2019, for the amount of $54,178.55. Account payable warrant, 1933 from February 14, 2019, for the amount of $116,669.76. Water warrant, 0933 from February 14, 2019, for the amount of $41,862.98. Payroll warrant, 1933, February 14, 2019, for the amount of $56,463.65. I will make a motion that we pay our bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Did I miss the payroll warrant, 1930 on 124?
19, payroll, I might have stuck in here. Water warrant, payroll warrant, 1930 from February, from January 24th, that one?
Yeah, I didn't hear that one.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. New business, Spirit of America Award.
It's that time of year, if you all could come up with somebody in this community who does a tremendous amount of volunteer work and benefits all of us, please come to a consensus and we'll put their name out there. I think it's a good award. Last year, it was real positive that the Legion got it, and they showed up in force at the county building, and pretty nice to see. Rumors filled with people.
When is that due?
By the end of this month, so we'll, we didn't do it that quickly last year, but if you have an idea, just email it to me, and we can go into March. I'm not too worried about that, but that's when they'd like it, the 28th.
Next, we have Chief Town. Recipient of the Main Association of Police David W. Pickering Award. Is, step to the front, chief. I'm going to just read this quickly.
Sure.
This is a real honor for the chief and for the town. Is, on Saturday, January 26, 2019, Main Association of Police held its 20th Annual Rewards Banquet at the Portland Elks Club. Chief Timothy Town of Berwick Police Department had the distinct honor of being selected as this year's recipient of the Main Association of Police David W. Pickering Award. This award is presented to the chief who has shown outstanding support for and made contributions to the Main Association of Police. It was noted that Chief Town started his career in 1993 as a reserve officer with the Berwick Police Department. He then rose through the agency ranks, becoming a detective sergeant, captain, and chief of police. Chief Town makes sure that his officers have the tools for trade to do their jobs, along with the proper training for the challenges they face. He has covered patrol shifts so his officers could, officers could attend to family personal matters. Chief Town has made it his mission to keep his officers safe in that they are treated fairly and with respect. Chief Town was presented the award by last year's recipient, Chief Michael Morrell of Yamas Police Department. Congratulations, Chief Town. There's also a great interview that was done up on our BCTV site. I think it got posted today.
That shows you the quality of BCTV. If they can make me look good, they can do anything.
Just one question, how long have you been chief, Tim?
I took over interim or acting in 2001.
2001.
Yep.
18 years.
Been a while.
Long time.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We go from that to posted roads, another real exciting time.
Here we are, yep. Always a shot in the dark that, when the frost is gonna come out, so.
All right, beginning around the end of February, the following roads will be posted for weights over twenty-three thousand pounds. They will remain posted until further notice. We have to vote on this, but I'll read them out. Pine Hill Road from Sullivan Street to Messengers Bridge. Little River Road from Messengers Bridge to North Burwick Town Line. Long Swamp Road from Little River Road to Lebanon Town Line. Cranberry Meadow Road from Pine Hill Road to Old Sanford Road. Old Sanford Road from Cranberry Meadow Road to North Burwick Town Line. Diamond Hill Road from Old Sanford Road to Little River Road. Wentworth Road from School Street to Old Route Four. Blackberry Hill Road from Burwick Road to Portland Street. Guinea Road from Blackberry Hill Road to School Street. Old Pine Hill Road North from School Street to Pine Hill Road. And then I have possible additions, Burwick Road and Old Pine Hill North. Is, uh, we have Old Pine Hill.
North already there.
It must be Old Pine Hill South, maybe?
Yeah, it's gotta be south, 'cause you already got Old Pine Hill North.
Right.
Yeah.
And that would connect in with the Burwick Road.
Yeah. There's legislation, very interesting, from the, uh, uh, logging.
Association, yes.
Association to prevent towns from posting roads, they think we do it willy-nilly and, uh, and just try to stick it to them. And I wanna make sure that people understand those heavy trucks, not just logging trucks, do a great deal of damage when the fro, frost is coming out of our roads. And we spend thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars on our roads and it's really important that they stay off them. And if they do it early in the morning when the ground is still cold, usually we're pretty.
There are exceptions.
There are exceptions that will do that, but it makes it tough, but it's, each year it gets shorter and shorter, that period, 'cause it comes out pretty quickly and they don't really, the frost doesn't get too deep into the ground, so. Before you know it, when we have Maryland's, uh, climate up here, we won't have to do that anymore, so, another twenty years. But, it's important.
Do I have a motion? To accept?
Hmm, so moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think maybe Worcester or Cemetery should be added to this.
Well, because they're, they're already between roads that are posted.
Uh, I guess that's a good point.
So they don't have access.
Yeah, 'cause my road, Cemetery Road is between Pine Hill and Cranberry Meadow.
You're right.
And they're both posted, so, is, um.
They'll just fall apart.
And, as we said, is, there, there are exceptions. I know when my, after my sister's house burned and they were rebuilding it in the wintertime and the concrete trucks is, uh, there were exceptions made if the weather was correct, you know, so. It's, it's not a hard and fast thing, you contact the, uh, town road crew and, uh, get permission, so. Uh, we have a second, we have, is, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Award for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Town Report Printing Bid.
Hello, I just received one bid again this year from Snowman Group. Um, the total for two hundred and fifty reports will be one thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. So I would like to recommend them to you.
Are they the same ones that did it last year? Uh, they turned out well.
Yeah, really well, they've been doing them for the past, I don't know how many years, since I've been here anyway. And before that.
I would move to accept the town's clear recommendation to award the printing contract to the Snowman Group, is that what it is?
Yep.
For the Town Reports. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. And request for additional funds, the American Legion Citizen of the Year Dinner from the Contingency Fund. Step up, Paul. Usually Andy's up here, but.
That would be me, I'm, uh, actually the finance officer for the Legion, my name is Paul Habrizzetl, I'm Burwick resident. Um, and you just, just took my whole speech.
Yeah, except for how much?
Well, we're looking, we're asking for a thousand dollars. Um, last year, well, we're very grateful to town, budgets, fifteen hundred dollars for the Citizen of the Year Dinner Awards. Um, and another twelve hundred dollars for the Memorial Day celebrations, um, and the, the flag posting on, on the grave sites. Um, last year, um, some things changed. Um, part of it was, um, was my doing and part of it is just, um, things happen. Um, the culinary arts program is no longer at Noble, it's in Sanford.
Sanford, right.
They can no longer, they are beyond the limits for safe CDC transport of pre-cooked, ready, heated food, they can't do it. Which means we can't have them catering for us.
That's too bad.
Who's going to cater for us is, is an open question, we're talking to the Mayo family to see if they can duplicate. We don't want sandwiches, we would like to have a sit-down, hot meal dinner. And, um, who does that kind of catering that's affordable, um, is a big open question. Um, last year, we also did a better job of doing awards that really weren't just a piece of paper. They are more representative of something that should be an honor, um, that the town is presenting to people, that the, that the Legion and the town are presenting to people. Citizen of the Year, Business of the Year deserved more than just a piece of paper. So we did a, a bang-up job doing plaques and frames and, um, and frames that were not just got from Walmart, they were better. Um, we increased, um, instead of giving them a little cardboard folder, we made better folders, um, that were both the Legion and the town, it has a picture of the town as well as, um, the thing. And we started printing them on, um, a nice, um, colored linen paper instead of on, um, you know, mimeograph paper. Last year, for the budget of fifteen hundred dollars, we spent two thousand, three hundred and some odd dollars and, and change. So this year, um, we'd like to ask for, we know it's gonna have to, would have to come from the contingency fund, we'd like an additional thousand dollars, is what we're asking for.
We gave, we gave them fifteen hundred?
Yes.
Already, correct?
Well, I haven't actually requested that yet because it was, the conversations were so up in the air, nobody was sure of what was happening. And, um, I know this has been, uh, mentioned and in conversations, but there was nothing official and, uh, somebody said, well, they already said they were gonna give us three thousand dollars. And somebody else said, well, that can't happen, and somebody, it was all, you know, so I, I was waiting to see what some dust settled before I actually requested anything. So I have actually the request for the twelve hundred dollars, the request for the fifteen hundred dollars, and an additional request for potentially your approval to, um, give us an additional thousand dollars. But it would have to come, my understanding is from this year's contingency fund. So that's what I'm requesting. And I, I think I got it, I think I got, I think I got the procedure right.
Was it thirty-seven? Was it thirty-seven in total?
Thirty-seven hundred total.
What, that we spent last year?
No, no, that's.
Oh, this year? Um, yeah, well, fifteen, twelve and fifteen is already in the budget.
It's already in the budget.
It's already in the budget, so the additional thousand dollars.
Additional thousand.
Yeah, and that will come out of contingents, the other stuff was budgeted for. So, just, they have to ask for it and we'll send them a check, so.
Yes. And I, I have it in writing, but he's already gone.
No, I mean, I'm in agreement, um, you know, the award ceremony, it should be something that's a little bit more substantial than just a piece of paper. So I think that we need to account for that, so I'm supportive of giving the additional thousand.
From what I understand historically, this was something.
I make a motion then.
The board had recommended quite a few years ago to do these kinds of awards, so, it's important.
It's been, been ongoing for many years.
Yeah.
And, uh.
And the big thing I'd say is, is the question, next year we'll have a much better handle on what additional, um, catering would cost. Whether we can do it still in the same budget or whether the Mayo, if we do find that the Mayo family does it, whether they actually do an edible dinner.
The golf, the golf course, the restaurant, they had those catering.
Yeah, and I would check Old Rail, um, I've seen, they've done a lot of.
Well, we were, like I say, it's, it's, losing the culinary arts program put everything up in the air, and I mean, um, we don't, there's no kitchen. Town Hall doesn't have a kitchen. You know, we don't have a kitchen, you know that, we don't have our own facility or anything, um, and then who do you find to do catering that's affordable?
Well, I definitely think you should reach out, um, there are, I mean, I know he's done a lot for the community, so I would reach out to Old Rail, if you could.
Old Rail Pizza there.
Okay.
He does, he does a lot of stuff.
Right, he's right, and some is rough.
I would, I would, I, I don't, I think it's a conflict if I vote, so.
Yeah.
I will second. I'll abstain.
You're gonna abstain, is your member too?
Not an active member.
Yeah, so we have a motion, is, um, I'll second it, is, uh, any further discussion?
Probably should abstain, but.
Yeah, um, is, no, this is something that the Legion has gone for, you know, many years now and is, you know, very widely received. And, uh, you know, people look forward to it, so, is, uh, any further discussion?
Oh, you know how I feel.
Yeah. All those in favor? Abstain?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to.
Yep, okay, is, uh.
We need.
We need to, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very, so, um, I'll be out of town tomorrow, but Thursday I will probably deliver, um, the actual written requests over, um, over to Town Clerk.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Not a problem. That brings us to our quit clean deeds and installment contracts. We have questions about one ninety-six Little River Road.
This is a piece of property that, um, we foreclosed on quite a while back, um, and had made efforts to try to collect. And, uh, recently, um, it's been foreclosed on for a while. This couple here came, one of them being the owner, prior owner, to ask if they could pay it in full and get it returned to them. And the process is they have to come before the board of selectmen, before, uh, that happens, before we do anything, so.
Would you like to step to the microphone, give us your name and explain things to us?
I will. I was the current, or the previous, oh, my name is Katie Grassi, previously Grassi, it is more, but in the deed it was Grassi. So I am the one that owes all the back taxes. My ex-husband actually would like to purchase this piece of property and move in there with my children, I would like my children to come to Burwick. I'm gonna be leaving the town, but I would like to stop the tunity for my children to be moved up here. So I'd like to sell it to him, so I'd like the deed put back in my name so I could transfer it to him.
As I explained to him, um, that we can't do anything about that transaction between the two of them. Just to be aware that if you quit cleaning it back to her, that's between him and her, uh, that it, for her to give, transfer the ownership, but we have no say in that.
Right.
So, he's aware, he's aware of that.
Have the taxes been paid up to date?
We have.
I have the money right now to pay them up to date, including, I believe, including this year's taxes, too.
That's, that's the rule, when we do that.
Yeah, I'd just like to buy the property from her and she's gonna go her way and I'll be moving in to town with our, uh, two children.
Is, uh, this is, this has been an ongoing problem with the back taxes over the years.
From here out, with me, it won't be a problem, um, I, her and I, we talk about kids and that's about it. I knew she was behind on them a little bit, that's where I came up with the idea where I'll pay the back tax, get it deeded back to you, but then you sell it to me. So, as of tomorrow, we'll go get it re-deeded to me. And we won't have a problem with taxes or anything like that since then.
Where do you live currently?
I live in Kidderi currently.
Kidderi?
Yeah, I've lived there for, geez, almost gotta be thirty years now, so. And I have two, we have, I have two, uh, three, we have three children together, one of them's twenty-one and she's off on her own. And the other two are sev, will be seventeen and sixty. So, and just kinda want a little piece of property out in the middle of nowhere and just do my own thing.
Is, um, I, I do have a problem with this, this is a piece of property that, over the years, we've had problems with. And it's not the first time that this has happened, is, um, you know, is, I, what's between you is between you two. Is whether, you know, you could have stepped up earlier in taking care of this or not, I don't know.
I, honestly, I wasn't aware, sir.
We haven't been together since our son was born, so.
Yeah, we haven't been together in sixteen years.
He just spoke to me and I thought it was, you know, that's a safe place for my children, currently they're in an apartment with him, so, at least they have a place of their own.
You know, we, we go through this all the time with other properties and, you know, and families. And we give them every opportunity we possibly can to catch up, and that hasn't happened until.
Like I tried it in the beginning, I was refused payments, I was told that you didn't want me to lose it, so not to pay it. And then it all went down, I didn't come back after that for those four or five months. And then when I got the letter about the eleventh, called him, and we assumed we could go and, we didn't, I did not know that everything else had already been done. I didn't know that the other year had been foreclosed on or anything, 'cause we came in with the payment to pay off.
How, how far back do they go, the taxes, just out of curiosity?
Say that again?
How far back, what's owed on the taxes, what's the tax year?
It goes back, uh, I think to two thousand and sixteen. So it's, it's, you know, three years behind, maybe even four, I don't have it with me.
Yeah, you had given me that, I looked for it before and I couldn't find it.
Yeah.
What you had shown me.
I have a little history.
Is, um, um, this is the property that we had put out for bids and nobody bid on it earlier. Is, um, I understand that after that process, there's somebody that did come in and express interest in it.
Yeah.
Um, is, but, um.
I mean.
I mean, no disrespect, with all due respect, sir, I pay my bills, uh, my truck paid it off two years early, um, I owe nobody anything. I don't like to owe people. And I, we talked to Mr. Eldridge, I believe it was two weeks ago.
Yep.
When we came in, I've been walking around with eighty-five hundred dollars to pay these taxes off in my pocket for the last two weeks, so.
Shouldn't be said that on public record here.
Can you escort out here?
Well, we have the police chief to escort you out.
I mean, no, I think the circumstances are a little bit different though, where the property's gonna transfer, I think that hopefully that will mitigate this happening in the future. Taxes will be brought current, it'll be paid for this year as well.
Yep. I'm just asking for a chance, sir.
I'm.
I say give him a chance.
I do too.
That a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Well, not done yet, gotta vote on it.
You wanna see her tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
So, come up tomorrow?
All those in favor? I'm gonna oppose it, but, is.
You'll see me here in a year or so, you'll, I'll prove you wrong, sir.
I hope so, I hope so.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Good luck. Um, we have no abatements or supplementals.
Nope.
Second public comment? Going once, going twice? Is, uh, we do have, uh, an executive session, is, this is just an informational one, there will be no decisions made in it. Uh, before we go to that, is I will go through the, uh, is there any other business and non-agenda items?
Nope.
That anybody wants to discuss?
Well, you know, well. Maybe a comment, I, I feel like we've gone through a lot of effort with, with, you know, the Fund of Jupiter and Mr. Cahaya. And I feel like we're doing all the legwork for this guy for, for no return. And, you know, I know there was some discussion about the, the tank being so, somebody wanted the tank over there on that piece of property. You know, I, I think we need to, I don't know, my, my opinion is, we need to stop doing the legwork for this guy. It's frustrating, 'cause he has no interest, he knows that we're the ones doing the legwork, and so, and he's, he's getting all of it for free, essentially. I think we've done enough for Mr. Cahaya and Fund of Jupiter. So I'd like to see some return on his part, uh, in good faith, and I haven't seen any of that. So that's just my comment, and I felt like I needed to say something about it because, um, I, I know we would all love to see something over there. And it would certainly benefit the town and the residents, but, uh, to what end? You know, sometimes I wonder if it might be best if we just bought that piece of property and controlled its test. controlled its destiny, um, 'cause right now, it's, it's, we don't, we have no idea. We have no control whatsoever, so that's my piece. I have, I have reached out to him about the parking lot property.
Mm-hmm.
But I have no response.
That's what I figured, you know? And that's, that's par for the course, and, and in today's day and age, there's, there's no excuse for that.
Right.
There's no reason why he cannot respond to us, it's just...
Disrespectful, I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous at this time.
You know, is, the, you know, is, the town has had some benefit, you know, we no longer have that, how...
We have a clean piece of property, is what we have, so does he.
But, yeah, well, that's it, is a clean piece of property that's sitting there doing nothing.
Exactly.
And, uh, is, you know, is, I don't know what else we can do, you know, it had been discussion in the past from other people of going back to the bankruptcy court, which is a dead end for us, 'cause that has nothing to do with the development of it. Um, is, I had suggested last year that, you know, we forego the, uh, the other grants for the other two pieces of the property, you know, is, but we've already started on that process, you know, and, um, but, is, and believe me, if I could, you know, it's, how much you say he sell it for?
Two million.
Two million dollars.
That was the last price I heard, but that's just a number he threw out.
Yeah, so, so, but, I agree, it's very frustrating.
I, I have reached out to a number of people who have that kind of money, who do develop, and then, uh, one told me no. Uh, he was more in Central Maine, uh, there's another developer out of Gorm who's done some great work up there, that I've reached out to and I haven't heard back from him, that was just recently, so, um, and I'll, I'll just keep doing it, you know? But again, you can have, like, we've had people who'd like to go in that part, over that, over there to put a business in, and he doesn't even respond.
If he's not cooperative, how, how is that gonna, nobody's, nobody wants to deal with him.
Well, and, and before anything happens over there, he has to be back in front of the planning board.
Right.
To redo that whole lot.
And we've reached out to him with a letter from Lee J. Felbin, our planner from Southern Maine Planning and Development, telling him that before he can do anything, he has to come back before the planning board to rezone it, or to redo the property, you know, the lot lines, so.
So, well, but... I'll keep beating my head against his door.
Yep.
Maybe something will happen.
You know, between James and I, we send him quite a bit of info, you know, information and emails and, um...
I, I think we should just need to stop sending him information.
Yeah.
Let, if there's somebody interested, they can deal with him, but I think we've done our part and, and more than enough, and, you know? It's just frustrating, we put forth all this effort and there's, there's no return on investment.
Yep.
At all. So, at what point do we divest ourselves of, of helping him any further?
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't help us, obviously, because we have a, a vacant piece of property, but at the same time, how far do we go?
Right. Yep. Anything else?